Hello, Kadisha. Hello, Larry, Brian, Danielle.
Howdy.
Just I always like to let everybody know we're streaming on YouTube.
I was looking for it. I couldn't find it. There it is.
Yeah, I'm just putting it out on Facebook right now.
And you monitor that on the side then with the YouTube. You have another another monitor that you watch the?
Actually, I haven't before, but. Yes, I do. Can you can you hear me?
Yeah.
The problem is I hear double now because. There we go. Okay, um, I I say something and then I hear it live streamed and it's freaking me out.
Yeah, you're gonna have to mute that because it'll be delayed too.
It'll be delayed delayed delayed.
Mike?
Yes.
I see your picture twice out there.
Because I really I need to do use to be logged in on Zoom on two computers to run the live stream. It just works better that way.
Hello, Sandy. How are you tonight?
Hi, Larry. Good. How are you?
Thank you for jumping in and helping take the minutes.
Anytime.
Don't mean that, do you?
I do mean that, actually. This home thing is kind of nice because then you get home, you get back, you know, you're already home and you don't get home at 10 o'clock. Are you? You guys are probably much later.
So Kadisha, how's your summer gone? Or going, I guess?
Yeah. Yeah, it's going all. How about you?
It's gone by really fast. Lots of things going on and like a lot of those things that you kind of want to do in summer in Wisconsin. It's like, sorry, nothing out there that would involve any kind of groups of people, so.
You want a social distance, you can go to the Boundary Waters canoe area like I did.
Social distance and perspire, right?
That's probably taking you to extreme, Brian, right? I mean, probably nearest person was like 200 miles away or something, right?
Well, there's other people in campsites, but the campsites are, you know, half mile apart at least and maybe even more than that. So you do see people once in a while, but yeah. Maybe wave to a minute as they paddle by on a canoe. But it was brutal. It was in the night high 90s and very humid, so. But no phone, trains, planes, automobiles, internet, no city lights.
What kind of critters do you see up there?
We didn't see any bear this time. I was kind of disappointed, so maybe I should ask for a refund.
Let's go to like a tomahawk area. We were driving back from my parents last week and a bear ran across the highway. Like, I've never seen a bear run across the highway in Wisconsin, but he was quick.
You always have a chance for bears and sometimes moose, but a lot of different birds and, you know, the furry woodland animals, you know, red squirrels, gray squirrels, chipmunks, bulls, mice, weasels, stuff like that, a lot of loons. We're kind of in an area where we had some yellow warblers, Canadian warblers and ruby kinglets. So those are all around. So it's kind of fun. Except for brutal heat. One minute to go.
Hi, Anne.
Guys. All right, I've got seven o'clock. Let's call the meeting to order. Larry? Okay, Genie?
Here.
Deja?
Here.
Steve?
Here.
Anne?
Here.
Am I missing anybody? What happened to our newbie?
Yeah, we're missing Stacy yet.
She was having some network challenges during our prior meeting and was going to reboot her system and it may have just taken a couple of extra minutes.
Up here she is and is and John. There we go.
And Stacy, are you here? I'll take that as a yes.
Oh, sorry.
No problem. Notice a meeting?
The meeting was properly noticed.
Okay, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Steve. Time to do the pledge of allegiance.
My flag again.
Get up there. You go. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Genie, our color guard. Next item on the agenda, I'll open it up to board members for any sleuths or recognitions.
I have two. I'm sure there are more, but Mrs. Holzclaw, she held the summer school health class for the high schoolers. And Mr. Vassili was the gym teacher for summer school for the for the high school students and they both did distance learning this year. So I'm sure it was a little bit of a challenge. We had trouble with textbook, but everything ended up being wonderful and I think both those teachers were providing that opportunity for our students.
Thank you for that. Anyone else? I think we're gonna have a recognition. One of us had a birthday just recently. What number was it, Mike?
It was a big five zero.
It's a milestone, you know, so never thought you'd live this long, huh?
A half century. It's hard to believe I made it this far.
Happy birthday. Happy birthday. It's a good club.
Thank you. Thank you.
Danielle or Mike, do you have any sleuths, recognitions? Oh, John Gahan?
I would want to salute Sandy. I know she's on here taking minutes tonight, but today kicked off Leadership Week and Sandy always does an amazing job of making sure that we have food and the rooms are taken care of and all of the little things along the way. And she's just like magic. She just like appears and stuff happens and then she's gone again. And so we can keep focusing on what we're doing and we always have themes for our Leadership Week to try to bring a little fun and team building into the week as well. And she always does a great job with that. So I'd want to salute Sandy for all of her support with Leadership Week.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Sandy.
And I would second that. I would also like to salute Jeff Barron's. Jeff has worked really hard and is really at the tip of the spear with bringing students on campus. We did have some, a few students come in for academic support as well, but we started bringing athletes back and he had a very involved plan, as you're aware, with trying to put mitigation and protocols in place to function in this environment. And as I'll talk a little bit, update a little bit on COVID. Update later, we've had to put those some of those procedures to use already. So but Jeff's done a really good job getting that together.
Thank you. Looks like Noah stuck in there. Hey, Noah. Let's go down there. If there's no other sleuths or recognitions, let's move down to consent agenda. We've got the minutes from the previous meeting, June 22nd. Policy and regular and some correspondence and there are no gifts. So unless there's any questions or corrections, I look for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Nobody jumping in there? Okay, thank you. All in favor, signal me saying hi.
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 Anybody opposed? Maybe that's easier. Okay. Head down to Business Affairs. I'm going to turn it over to Steve to talk about their earlier meeting.
Yes, so it's end of the fiscal year from a financial perspective anyway. So this month's agenda focused heavily on the end of year expense and revenue reports as well as check registers. I the team, the business affairs team in the school works really hard at the end of the year to get payments, actual payments issued out to to all of our suppliers and employees and parents and everybody who we have owe a debt, so they don't have to record the accounts payable items and then double track those items when we do actually make the actual payments. So they work really hard to get all of that closed out as they can. And so most most everything was closed for the year. There was only a couple of areas where John noted there may be an outstanding expense that we haven't yet accounted for. Food Service Fund being one where it takes a little time for chart wells to do some of their audit and work and verify anything we owe them. And then it was maybe one transfer student or out of district student that we may sell a bill coming for. So a few things, but most everything was cleared out and and we could see from the the accounting that we saw and the the budget level, we could see that, you know, we were really close to where the projections were post the May adjustment that we all voted on and approved back in a board meeting back in May. We covered a couple of places where there's some savings from expenses this year that were pushed into higher levels of funding for a couple of accounts, $400,000 to the fund balance to maintain the 25 to 26% of Fund 10 budget objective that we have as a shared goal for the board to help keep borrowing costs low. As well, $200,000 being added to Fund 46, our trust fund, capital improvement trust fund and $100,000 of additional funding above budgeted amount to Fund 73, which is post employee and post employment retirement benefits fund. So some good opportunities there to help increase the funding in those accounts as we end of the year with slightly lower expenses than anticipated. The audit starts next week, the official audit. So the pre-work audit was, if you remember, was done in early to mid-June. This is the official audit. It'll begin next weekend, Monday, and it'll be done remotely for the first time. And there's a schedule set up for calls every two hours to reconnect to make sure all the questions and issues and anything that needs to be addressed is communicated and can be addressed quickly. So we'll see the result of that audit. Usually we get that in December because there are some state deliverables that don't usually come in until then for us to all get a copy of that, but that's starting next week. And I think that's all of my notes. We went very exhaustively through all of the accounts this time at the end of the year to talk about where everything stood. Everything looked to be in great shape. So good work by John and his team as usual. And we talked about some of the things that we'll discuss in the future, starting in the fall this year with some more money saving opportunities from a refinancing opportunity for some of our other long-term debt. So we'll address that in the in the fall when we get back to the new school year, if you would. Great report. That's my report. Thank you.
Great report. And again, thanks, John and your team. Spectacular results. So thank you for that. Anybody have any questions or concerns or comments here before we move to accept the report? All right, the motion to approve, accept the report?
So moved.
Thank you, Anne. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say what we're saying. Hi?
Hi.
Oppose? Okay. Thank you for that. That's going to bring us down to new business. The first item we have under there is our review of the curriculum renewal cycle and Danielle has some changes to offer for us.
Yeah, so this calendar only comes to you guys when there's an update that's needed on it. But this year I did decide to make a few updates, which I outlined in the memo that is attached, kind of specifically rearranging some things so that Career and Tech Ads, CTE, has a little bit more budget money available. I always try to balance the curriculums that come forward so that expensive curriculum, some areas are just more expensive because of the technology needs or resource needs that those are balanced with areas that maybe don't don't have such an impact on the budget. So there was a change there as well as a kind of combination of RTI that was in initial implementation and is now more in full implementation and doesn't need to be parsed out. And then we had a change in our digital citizenship resource that we rely on pretty heavily and they've made some major revisions. And so we want to take a closer look at that. Also with Rachel York being in her position, she hasn't had a chance yet to go through a curriculum cycle with that particular program. And so she's poised and ready to to lead that this year as well. So just a few, a few minor changes. One thing that I mentioned, I always keep a look at the budget so that that kind of stays balanced from how much each curriculum costs. The other piece that I did this time around as well as looked at a technology need, Rachel and I looked at it and sort of ranked the curricular areas as far as their needs for technology. Because that has an impact on her budget and so that we balanced and chose curriculum, paired them together so that there wasn't any two together that were going to have a big impact on technology resources and therefore throw off her Mike Murphy's budget unexpectedly in a given year. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Any board members have any questions or concerns? Larry?
I apologize for not catching this earlier, but I was just noticing in terms of the piece that you have in there under the social studies, it's the birth to three-year-old. Is there, did I miss or did I miss something? Or what is what's that about in terms of the birth to three?
So that's our early childhood program that's underneath our student services wing. So generally speaking, it's it's just our three-year-olds that we service, but those are students coming to us usually in need of speech services that we start to service prior to 4K. So that's under Anthony Strankey's department.
Okay.
Anyone else?
You need a motion, correct?
Yes, we do.
But move to approve the curriculum renewal cycle as presented.
Second.
I didn't catch who got that one.
Anne got it, I think.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, signal me saying hi?
Hi.
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 Any oppose? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you for that. All right, next item is the under new business is the discussion consideration of the revised handbooks and handbook addendums for all our different groups. Collins, is Colin here? There he is.
Colin, he's probably one that should have received a salute as well. This is a lot of work. Updating all of these publications and and I know he's put a ton of time in on it. So with that, I'll turn it over to Colin.
Thank you. And as usual, I want to give you the highlights. So the the cover memo really pulled out additions and some talking points for the the main handbook, really starting with the addition of, of course, with COVID-19 of the the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, and that really gives our employees additional time if leave is required due to any COVID-19. And there are some qualifiers that are in that section and that's on page 17. Obviously, from the policy meeting, there'll be an additional number of pages of procedures that go along with Title IX changes for employment harassment, in particular sexual harassment. So the the foundation of that language and policy is on page 19. That is in addition. Provisions for the volunteer firefighters and their and their leave. I don't believe we have any employees who fall in that category yet. And then in addition to the drug and alcohol, tobacco and nicotine-free workplace, added language for vaping, that's on page 32. But no major changes there. An additional clarifier to the concealed weapons. Some details for employees operating district vehicles. And then a large section for the USERA Act, which is protecting our employees with military leave. And then, of course, five pages on reopening schools, really workplace workplace protocols emphasizing employee health and safety, returning to work throughout the summer and this fall. Any questions from from those pieces? Those are the the broad brush highlights of the additions.
Anyone? Definitely a lot of work there.
Colin?
Yes, Anne.
On the the non the confidential support employment on page two on the changes. There's a reference there that basically says that it's at the end of the page two, under no circumstances will an employee be allowed to perform work-related duties at home. Do we run into trouble when it comes to COVID and the having to work at home at times with that statement? Is that too broad of a statement?
Yeah, we would not want to limit that. And then the acknowledgement section, the acknowledgement document is really going back to employee contracts for really other duties as assigned. So I would like to to remove that piece if if that, in fact, is in the confidential support addendum. We don't want to limit that. We really are going to have to have an all hands on deck approach this fall.
Yeah, that was it was on page two and I think it was in part of the additions.
Yeah, it's in the last sentence, Colin, of the what's highlighted in blue. So yeah, that's a good catch, Anne. We would not want that in there.
That is very good catch.
Yeah, we need to strike that.
Does that show up anywhere else?
I did. I'm not sure if it does or not, but it might be something worth looking into. I didn't see it pop up.
So Colin, I would just take a look at any time where he may be added. Because I know comp time is something that we've been addressing and looking at. So anywhere, any of these addendums where we've maybe put language in addressing comp time because that's looks like was some boilerplate language that went in there to make sure that we're not tying our hands or something like that.
Will do.
Well, with that change recommendation.
Right, Brian, the other other thing I'd say is make sure that you check all the addendums because none of the dates have been changed. They all talk about the 1920 school year.
Yeah, and Bob Butler works off of old addendums and likes to send us those. We have one final read and we adjust all of those, including the cover pages as well. There's about five strike-throughs going back to 2016. Yeah. Yeah, good catch. We will update those as well.
Anything else anybody saw?
Going back to, I had emailed Colin about a couple of things, but Larry and Genie, just to go back. I had asked him about some of that hate crime speech as well to go in with the harassment. And Colin was going to look into that, correct, Colin?
That's correct, especially with some of the bullying policy as well as harassment, that's really going to be expanded. So I'd like to think there'll be some language of hate crimes involved in that.
Okay, and that's just to go back to our just during the policy meeting.
Yes.
Now that we have a couple of changes, do we want to table this for next time for another review?
I think so.
Other than you need to have them out though, Colin, when you need to have them available.
This after the next board meeting, so in August, we would, we would like to have that approved and set for employees to acknowledge.
Because you still have to put some retirement verbiage in there, don't you?
Yeah, we're bringing that back as well on the cover memo. Some of the post re post employment benefits, we still are looking to get some language back in the financial area.
Can we bring this back at our learning session and okay at then?
Yeah, because we have a note here that on July 27th, we were going to be bringing that retirement language forward so we could bring it all forward at that point.
Sounds good to me. We can make those adjustments and bring them back.
Thanks.
Any other questions while we're looking at handbook details?
I don't think so. I think we're good for next time.
Great. Great, thank you.
So COVID update.
Yeah, so I just wanted to give a verbal update. Today we met for day one of Leadership Week, talking a lot about it in greater detail about our our plans moving forward. So we're getting very close to being able to to publish a lot more specifics in terms of our our plan for the fall. A document that we spent quite a bit of time on today is a agreed upon document on common mitigation efforts among Waukesha County Schools. And that's helpful. That's been a product of our ongoing collaboration, not only as a group of schools, but also in working with the county executive and his office and his health department. So really at this time, our focus is on planning for a return to in-person instruction in fall. And we will also be developing a virtual option for families to opt into. We spend time looking at, again, at our survey results from a few weeks ago. And the percentages of parents who are interested in a virtual option for their children, which ranges between a low of 9% to high of 12%. And the percentages of parents who are interested in a virtual option for their children, which ranges between a low of nine percent to high of twelve percent across our four schools. So those are our key pieces. We talked a lot about, we have quite a bit of detail about specific things we'll do in terms of social distancing, cleaning and sanitation, procedures, how we're going to space people out, how we're going to handle things like lunch, transportation, providing PPE for all staff, we're going to provide face shield and masks for for all of our staff. So I'd be happy to take specific questions and would also look for any direction from this board in terms of a process or procedures that you might like in terms of us keeping you updated as to managing COVID-19 and a return to instruction. In fact, a little bit of a conversation with Larry today, talking about this as a potential goal for superintendent board goals. And that this should probably just be a standing item on agendas moving forward. So I'd look to see if there's any specific questions or things that you would like to see as a board as we move ahead with our planning.
I'd certainly be interested in how you're going to do the separation, you know, the social distancing, you know, given that it would seem like we need three times the amount of floor area.
Yeah, I can give you there's some, there's some broad approaches that are going to be used across schools. Cohorting is one. So there's a number of things that we're looking at doing. Cohorting is a strategy in which we really limit the circles of of students or or staff that are exposed to one another. So really, especially K through eight, there will be a lot of cohorting practices that'll be employed where you don't have different classes of students in elementary, for example, share the same recess, ask each other in the hallway, you keep them away from each other at times like lunches, move on core teachers to the classrooms where appropriate. You know, so recesses are going to be using lots of different open spaces and they've done redone their schedule, for example, at at PLE to have far more recesses. So again, just by cohorting and keeping groups from having more contact across classes, you limit a lot of exposure. Some of this is developmentally appropriate. You know, you can do more things like spacing out in assigned seats, probably for older students, four-year-olds. You know, if you've ever watched a like five or six-year-old soccer game, you know, where it's just kind of the beehive. I don't think that that's going to be necessarily real effective within the classroom in terms of spacing out for some of our youngest kids, but it's a strategy we're looking at implementing with older students. There are opportunities and things we're considering with, in particular, high school students where you may have stretches of time where not all of the students are at the building because they could be at home and would need parent supervision during the day where our youngest kids do. So there are some pieces there. We've even done some practice setups of classrooms where desks are spaced out. And the research would say even as little as three feet can provide some advantage. Obviously, six feet is the number that we hear all the time, but in some cases, that's not, that's not an option. We, transportation-wise, we're looking at the potential of doing a split run of buses for PLE and Horizon as as an option. So where we could bring the numbers down on buses to try to do potentially one student per seat in that environment. So looking at a variety of strategies to help us do some spacing as well as using things like cohorting, potentially modifying a schedule at the high school to focus on just four of the eight blocks. We run an alternate day block for a quarter at a time, so we'd run a straight block for a quarter. That would cut in half the number of students that teachers are exposed to and the number of students the kids are exposed to in their classes. So there's a number of things that we're working into these plans that'll help limit exposure when they return to help mitigate virus.
What do you envision the cafeteria looking like?
Well, in some cases, it's having more lunch periods. You know, it's spreading students out more. For example, at the high school, you may be spread all the way across the foyer in front of the auditorium as a space. You may run a lunch section. So if you could have a group in the foyer by the auditorium, for example, and one in the cafeteria, there you get to six, six lunch periods instead of three. So you'd be able to do that. So looking at, you know, we've talked about things like classrooms as lunch spaces as well, but we're very really focused on making sure that our teachers have thirty-minute duty-free lunches as well. So so working on those those pieces to to spread out and ChartWells has been really good. They have six different models that they've developed in terms of lunch delivery based on the circumstances that that help with serving lunches in this kind of environment.
Steve, go ahead.
I'd like to find out what what the response has been from the staff. I want to hear about their their reactions and what are they thinking? You shared the survey results when the parents, nine to twelve percent, want a virtual option. What's the staff feedback's been like?
Yeah, we did a similar survey with staff. One second, let me pull up a reference here. So for example, we asked both parents and staff, we had for, to give you kind of the size of the survey, parent survey was fourteen hundred and forty-five responses. Staff, we had three hundred and twelve responses across all work groups. We had seventeen percent, twenty-three percent of parents were who rated themselves as uncomfortable or extremely uncomfortable returning students to school. And nine to twelve percent that would prefer a virtual learning option. Staff, we had seventeen percent that are uncomfortable or extremely uncomfortable returning to school. And then we had three percent of staff interested in serving as virtual instructors. So we have a lot of teachers who are interested and willing to serve as virtual teachers with that virtual option that we talked about. We asked both groups what factors would help you feel more comfortable. There were a variety of factors. The top four that we received back from parents was cleaning and sanitizing, number one. Following public health guidelines, number two, mandatory symptom checks was three, and social distancing was four. For staff, one was also, the one and two are the same with cleaning, sanitizing, and following public health guidelines. Number three was social distancing and four was being provided PPE. So there's things that the staff was able to tell us that they would like to to make them more comfortable. We also had an item on there about unwilling to return for staff. And and we had one staff member indicate unwilling to return, but after a conversation or the principal called, that staff just indicated that they were pretty uncomfortable at this time, but did intend to return in the fall. So now to to follow up on that, Steve, we have a presentation on our plan that we're going to present to our full staff on the twenty-seventh of July. I'm going to be sharing that on the twenty-first next week with my superintendent advisory, which is twenty staff members across work groups across the district next week to get their feedback on that as well. And we're finalizing that presentation, working with working with all of our administrative leaders during Leadership Week this week.
Thanks, Mike.
Noah, you got a question?
So I've sort of compiled a list here as we go on, just things I've been thinking about as a student. Obviously, I would love to return in the fall. I would love to see all the new additions in high school and see how things play out. So I just have a few things I would, I'm hoping we can get an answer now. Obviously, you want the least of all the full information when the whole county has the plan put together. But one of the first things I was thinking about was hallways and like classes dismissal times. Are we going to do typical one bell, everyone out in the hallway at once? Are we going to try and do a staggered hallway dismissal thing? Or maybe you have areas that classes meet up and then sort of separate and get to the classes separately, so you keep those classes somewhat in a bubble?
Yeah, so that's one of the detailed pieces to work out yet, Noah, in terms of transition, transitions and hallway times. One strategy as an example is no locker use during the day, because if people stop at their lockers, it creates more congestion more kind of cross-traffic and interaction would probably be a situation where, especially if there's coats or those things, you go to your locker to start the day and not again till the end of the day as as one way to alleviate hallway traffic. So there'd be more backpack use that would be happening. In some cases, and I don't know if this is going to be practical at the high school, there can be one-way hallways. You've probably seen that at grocery stores and those things, preventing that cross-traffic. You can stagger release times mu- much more complicated at the high school because you don't go to, all go to the same classes. So, you know, at the elementary school, the fourth grade kids stay together, right? Or in the house concept at the middle school, they kind of move as a group. In the high school, you might have twenty-five kids in your class and you might go to, you know, fifteen different classrooms. So to stagger these times, it's a lot more complicated at the high school because you might be sending some kids five minutes sooner arriving at a room that hasn't dismissed yet.
Thank you. My next question is about large groups that are now to the school district. I know for scouts that meets at PLE. My dad's very curious if they're going to be allowed to meet again, starting in the fall. If there's going to be any guidelines on how they can meet in like the gymnasium or a cap on the limit, a number of people that can attend an event.
Yeah, for outside, I'm sorry, I didn't quite get started. Was that for outside groups, Noah? Meeting at school?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. We haven't made a decision on allowing outside groups to use facilities yet, because I know, for example, we have a church that meets on Sundays in our facility as well. That's that's yet to be decided. I do know that, you know, because right now our focus is on the school day itself. But that's that's certainly a possibility. I know that our plan will have really significant restrictions on any adults entering school unless absolutely necessary. Volunteers, visitors, those kinds of things would be restricted, but that's during the school day. So outside the school day groups meeting using facilities, that's something that we have to determine yet.
All right, the next thing I was thinking about is will classes that have access to opening the windows, are they going to be encouraged to keep them open in these summer months? And sort of keep not only the circulation increased in the rooms, which actually prevents this spread dramatically. But don't they have maybe fans and just keep air circulating in the room?
Potentially HVAC and air movement is something that's in the plan that is being looked at, for example, on buses. One of the recommendations will be weather permitting that the windows would be open, to your point. So that's that's something that we'd want a recommendation from an HVAC perspective. Because I do know that in some of the models that I've seen and and some of the articles that I've read, like in Germany and others, that have in the windows open and those things is a strategy that that they're using. Certainly, the guidance that you get is outdoor spaces because of that air movement is a safer environment. So it's a possibility.
Okay, the next one I was thinking about is I've heard a lot of rumors about split classes. I we, I don't need an answer on that. Now I know that's probably part of your plan, but if that is the case, would you have different groups of poking? Would you try and encourage students who can drive to school to drive to school separately to keep kids on the bus lower? And also keep families sort of in their own family bubble to and from school?
Yeah, you know, because normally what we do with our buses, I encourage people to ride the bus to reduce congestion. But this is a year where we're probably going to be recommending all kinds of things that we wouldn't normally push for. I mean, parking is going to be limited as it always is for for students. So although we're getting, we're gaining about thirty spaces through the construction. I don't anticipate us having the room to have substantial expansion of student parking spaces. But encouraging parents to do more parent off is is part of the plan because the more parents drive and drop off their kids, the less the less congestion is, the greater the spacing is on buses, to your point.
Okay, and then are you going to see an increase in classes that are going to be offered as more of a blended option? But once that curriculum's then handed out or taught, you could, you'll see kids may be able to leave early in the day just so they're not exposed for a longer period of time?
Yeah, I mean, we're talking about a variety of things. One, an option that
I think we lost Mike.
Lost Mike.
You did.
Look what you did, Noah.
I'm on my other computer now.
Okay.
I think we lost Mike.
I'm back.
We see you.
Okay, let's try this one. When I'm doing the live stream and I'm usually running, working from two, so I had to, I had to jump off my Chromebook onto this one. So what was the last thing you heard, Noah? You were asking a question about?
Blended classes?
Oh, yeah. So, you know, there's, there may be an option for students to, or parents opt into a fully virtual option. There will also be a situation where students could be out for things like quarantine or regular illness where it would have to be some kind of a blended blended option that would take place while they're out and then the in-person option. So, but what you're talking about is like what we have blended like US history in some of those courses where students attend class as needed. If they're keeping up on their work virtually, they don't necessarily have to have to be there. So I don't know that we're going to have a big expansion of those kinds of things because we have to kind of tackle what we can tackle at this at this point, but it's possible.
And then the last question, I know the might end up being answered for this at the time being, but are face masks sort of going to be required at school, at least in some classrooms or doing some activities?
Well, that's a really hot topic, Noah, and there's lots of discussion about face coverings. Face coverings have been for some reason controversial. The consensus that is formed generally in the scientific community is that they provide substantial benefit and the reduction of spread. So there's a, there's populations of staff and then there's populations of students. So it's, we have yet to make a final decision on what our expectations are for face coverings. But it's certainly a strategy that will have some level of use. We're going to provide PPE, for example, to all staff. So I'm sure there'll be heavy use of of those items among staff. We have to decide what's appropriate for students. And there's, of course, difference between a four-year-old and an eighteen-year-old with those things.
And the last thing I was thinking about with face masks is because, you know, I work seven hours and I have to wear a face mask some days, which does get pretty tiring when the face is that long. But would you see potentially times during the day where a teacher takes their kids maybe outside and they can all socially distance and just sort of breathe some fresh air? I know that helps me at work, but that's something I was thinking could work, not how do you just escort a class out of the building and just hang out outside for ten minutes or so?
Yeah, we talk a lot about we're going to have to maximize use of outdoor spaces. You know, if you think about FIED class, for example, any class that involves greater respiration, outdoor, where you can spread out and be in that outdoor environment is really beneficial. So maximizing the use of outdoor spaces, it will be, will be important, so.
Thank you for those questions. Anything more, Noah?
Nope, that's all, sorry.
Thank you for those questions. I saw Deja's hand up, Deja.
Yeah, I just have a question. I've been contacted by many families or parents on both ends of the spectrum and everywhere in between. And I think the similar thing is everybody's needs a contingency plan. However, when are you planning to announce everything, Mike? Are you still going for August first or right around there?
Yeah, it'll probably, since August first is a Saturday, it'd probably be July thirty-first that we'll publish everything. But I'm hoping to provide parents with more detail, maybe as early as next week with another survey to get more specific on desires for a virtual option, because we would have to staff that. Because uh we would have to staff that, that option, so we're gonna need more detail on on that piece. But I think parents also need more uh more detail as to what it's gonna look like for them to be able to make those kinds of decisions.
Uh, Larry, I think I saw your hand up.
Yeah, actually, I've got a couple of maybe comments and then a question or two. So, um, Noah and the folks, um, I think the city of Milwaukee. And Shorewood just passed the resolution that face masks are gonna be required if you're inside public building or in buildings, you will. And it went down to age three uh as being the kind of requirement for that. So, you know, it's out there. And then my other personal comment and observation is, so I've been going to work since March. Um, when I'm in my building, I'm required to wear a face mask anytime I'm outside of my office. So, it's just the way we do business now. So, uh, second kind of question and comment, Mike, tomorrow morning, the S W S A is hosting um. The physician, a physician from Children's Hospital, I think he's chief medical officer there, and also then uh Paul Pharaoh and Ben Jones. What role have they played or how how are you sensing what they're doing in providing guidance and a direction? From the county level, if you will, or the districts in the county?
Yeah, so we have been on calls weekly with Paul and Ben Jones. Um, so every Wednesday, we've had a standing call with uh with them and other members of Paul Pharaoh's staff. Uh, so it's been a really good collaboration. I referenced uh that document with the the Waukesha County Schools mitigation strategies. That we're working off of, um, where we think it's really important for us all to be consistent. That's also been in collaboration with the county. Uh, the county, as you know, has a um stay safe to stay open um program for businesses. And they're also developing something similar and a and a s- uh separate page on their website uh for uh schools as well. And so they're gonna be publishing F F A Qs and materials related to that. So, um, I give I give them credit for the time that they've given us and the direct work that they've engaged in with all the schools in the county. And and we're gonna be, um, we have Leadership Week stuff tomorrow, but we'll, the whole group's gonna be um viewing that. Presentation from the Children's Hospital physicians and listening to what Paul and and Ben have to have to say tomorrow morning.
I think I saw Kadisha's hand up.
Yeah, my question, my question was uh across of the school. Is the school going to be at the same time? Or will like, for example, like Kelly or her middle lady returning for um the high school in the middle?
Kadisha, you're you're kind of broke up there a little bit. Uh, is there some way you can ask that again with a different microphone or something?
I think the question, if I heard the question and I, yeah, broke up a little bit, Kadisha was, in essence, were you asking that? Are all students gonna be on campus at the same time? Kadisha, was your question, are all students gonna be on campus at the same time across the buildings?
She sent a text that said yes, Mike.
Oh, okay, great. So, um, yeah, I think there will be, I mean, it's gonna be impossible not to have kids here at the same time. Across campus at at some point. Um, you know, the, there could be uh alternative schedules, especially with older students. Um, but the buildings would be, you know, not, uh, we, for example, we don't intend to be sending high school volunteers over to elementary. So, there won't be a lot of interaction across across those schools. So, I don't know if that answers your question. Um, but you know, bus arrivals are different and staggered. Arrival times, departure times are are different and staggered across those buildings. Uh, otherwise, there wouldn't be much cross-interaction among those schools.
I think I saw Ann's hand up before, is that right?
Yes, um, Mike, you've talked about the cooperation with the other districts. Do you think that most of the districts are on the same page or are we gonna be going through, you know, Waukesha's doing it this way, you know? Cal Marine's doing it that way, or do you see it pretty cohesive?
I think it's pretty cohesive, but there's gonna be, there's gonna be some differences uh in school districts in terms of strategy and approach. Um, you know, but I think by and large, you know, there's, we've agreed on uh trying to coordinate communication. Um, I think you're gonna start seeing, I know you're gonna start seeing communication over the next couple of weeks, as early as this week from some districts. Um, and so we're sharing that, for example, so we're not uh creating issues for each other as a surprise. Uh, because a a district makes a decision. Uh, but in terms of that that document I talked about with mitigation efforts, I mean, that's that's a pretty detailed. Um, piece of work that is uh agreed upon. So, I think we're gonna be, we're gonna be pretty consistent, but there will be some nuances and some differences.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, anybody else have any questions? Alright, thank you for that update, Mike.
Um, yeah, I just, let me just add, just to kind of close, Brian, I mean, there's. Uh, a lot of detail that we're gonna, and decisions we're trying to finalize this week. Um, we wanna be really firm on those things before we communicate uh too much out. Because I think it was Deja's comment, right? You've heard from people on both ends of the spectrum. And um if you've seen my message in the perspective, I talk about that, you know, I will literally have. Uh, one email and then two emails later, the polar opposite views on all of this. Um, and I get it, you know, people have strong opinions and they're all valid and people are worried about their kids. They want their kids back in their school. Um, they want us to to uh make good decisions and that's what we're, that's what we're trying to do. So, um, this is one of those things where it's going to be, it's going to be challenging because of of. Um, the strong opinions on things, but we're gonna, we're gonna really work to follow the guidance that we have from reliable sources. We're gonna hear more tomorrow morning from that S W S A meeting from Children's Hospital. Um, the American uh so Academy of Pediatrics had an article recently, that's something that we've looked at quite a bit, as well as what's been put out by. Uh, D P I and in our conversations with the county. So, uh, really trying to be thoughtful about applying all those things and and putting in a students in a practical situation. Um, and in the best situation we can, um, uh, because we want them to, you know, actually enjoy coming to school too. Which is, you know, made a little bit more challenging by these these circumstances, so. Uh, but more to come as we get these final details hammered out.
Larry, did you have a question?
No, not really a question, it's more of a comment. And I think at the last meeting, I made a comment relative to the amount of work and it's some of the immediate activity. So, next thirty, sixty days and then beyond that. Uh, because as we've talked about the contingency plans and the other things, as the the plans become dynamic and fluid as we go forward. Uh, the idea of potentially having this as being one of our board slash superintendent goals. Uh, and as Mike, I think, alluded to earlier, just having sort of ongoing dialogue and discussion with this uh this particular topic. So, it uh may come up a little bit later in terms of when we talk about board goals and super technicals. Uh, but I think it kind of is deserving and worthy of a pretty, uh, one of those board super technicals that we have out there, so.
Alright, uh, any further questions that we have for Mike and the plans for?
I have a question.
Thank you, Jeannie.
Uh, Mike, I'm assuming your plans are kind of fluid. I mean, if Wisconsin ends up looking like Florida, Arizona, we're going to rethink things, correct?
Yeah, it's a really good point. That's what we've said in all of our communication. So, our our priority and our goal is to get kids back on campus. Um, and I know that the county's approach and focus is going to be to isolate quarantine, not close. To the greatest extent possible. Um, obviously, the uh, um, the more that the virus increases. Uh, you know, the higher the rates of infection, all those kinds of things. Uh, if we have, you know, uh, more infections in our own system, those are going to require us to respond. And whether that be um shutting down a cohort or a group or a classroom or a school, you know. It might be possible that we close down one school for a stretch of time, but not all schools. Um, and and so we are preparing to be able to go back and forth. Um, uh, being able to transition to virtual learning, we had three months of experience of that at the end of this last year with no notice. So, now we have more experience and we have more notice, so we're capable of doing that as as need be. Um, but I really like that that slogan from the county, quite frankly, is stay safe to stay open. So, we talk about opening, getting kids back, we think that that's the best scenario. But we're gonna have to live with those mitigation um strategies. Uh, whether it be social distancing, whether it's been some modified schedules, whether it's, you know, sanitation practices, use of P P E. Those are components that are gonna help us uh mitigate things and try to stay open.
Alright, any last minute uh questions for Mike? Before we move on? Okay, next item on our agenda is the Policy Committee, which met earlier today, so I'm gonna turn it over to Jeannie.
Okay, the two policies that we had were um eighty-two-hundred-point-oh-two, which dealt with special education. If you look at it, there were just minor changes made out of it according to new state statutes. And then the other one was thirty-eight-oh-oh-point-oh-one, um, fixed charges income. We made no changes on that one either. And I had no comments, no one commented to me about either one.
Alright, thank you, Jeannie. Uh, anybody have any issues with this? Sorry, any issues with these two policies? Uh, if not, we're gonna push it to uh the consent agenda for next time. All good? Okay. Uh, next item is uh personnel issues. Colin's still here, any resignations?
Nope, no resignations. Happy to announce we have hired a Chinese teacher and uh no leave requests either.
Alright, I think we have to uh make motion to uh to hire uh Mr. Jing Gao.
Mrs. Ms.
This is Ms. Jing Gao.
Jing Gao.
Say it again?
Uh, Jing Gao.
Thank you. Okay, who's got the second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor, so can we saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, wonderful, welcome. Uh, now we go down to uh board goals and operations and review upcoming activities here. Uh, next meeting is actually gonna be in person uh on the twenty-seventh. Uh, where we're going to meet at uh six o'clock and it's a learning session, uh, talking about the construction. Uh, for those of you that received a hard hat, please, please bring those along, because I think we're gonna need those as we tour the facility. Uh, best to bring your masks as well, so uh any comments on that, Mike?
Uh, we'll be in the uh back in the boardroom. The boardroom is finished. Um, there's new carpeting that you'll see that's in there and there's new lighting uh that's complete. So, uh, we'll start off uh uh in the boardroom and um, you know, I'd bring a face covering. And yeah, if you have a hard hat and those kinds of things, uh, then that's what we should need. And we'll do, um, we got a couple of items that we've talked about already, uh, including the handbook updates that we have to get a quick look at. And then we'll get an update from C G Schmidt on progress and take a tour of facilities, which are coming along nicely.
Uh, Noah and Kadisha, are you planning on being there?
Can you send the date again?
It's July twenty-seventh at six P M. I didn't catch you any of that, Kadisha. Okay, that's good, I got that one, okay. Fantastic, alright. Uh, we'll probably have some extra hard hats just in case, right, John? Okay, fantastic. Alright, and then the next uh opportunity to get together in person would be for. That graduation on July thirty-first. Um, is that still moving ahead?
Yeah, Brian Sniff, I'm not sure if it's been sent out yet. I know he was planning uh beginning of this week, I believe, to send out a survey to families. Um, with an explanation of what that looks like, because we're following the county's guidelines on group size. Uh, group size is currently a hundred uh people. And so, uh, it's much more flexible if weather permits us to do it outside. Um, and you can, you can view um spaced-out groups as different groups. So, you could have students on the field and then you could have, use the sets of bleachers and those things and view those as separate entities. So, I believe the max size he figured he could do at one time was sixty-three students. Uh, based on his his math with the staff that that need to be there. Um, if we have to be inside, um, then that's gonna be smaller, because the entire size of the group could only be one hundred. Um, and we're thinking two, uh, two, um, two guests per student, I think, is what his his plan is. Um, so he's waiting to get that feedback and then he would determine how many rotations of students it would take to get through. Um, so we're waiting to hear back and we'll we'll keep you informed as to as to the status.
Are all of us on the platform or whatever?
No, I don't, I don't think so. I'm not sure what the plan is for this, but in a typical, um, a typical graduation space. There's a couple of board members that are up there. Uh, what do we usually have? Facts that are usually on stage. Uh, in this case, we might do it differently just to keep uh distancing. Because there will be a, um, students have already received their diplomas. Um, there would be some speeches, there'd be a percent, an opportunity to process in. Um, a stage walk and process out. Um, music would be played, but not by the band or sung by the choir because of the circumstances. So, that's the, that's kind of the nickel tour of of what this would look like.
If it would help with um ability to have more people participate, um, who are actual graduates. I'd I'd be happy not to, not to attend so that more, we could get this through a little faster.
Thank you, Steve.
Yep.
I agree.
Okay, um, then uh August tenth is our annual meeting. We're gonna start early to that night with business affairs. And then the regular, business fairs at six, and then a regular board meeting at six-thirty. The budget hearing, as tradition, will start at seven, and then the annual meeting will be at seven-thirty, so.
Brian, there should be a policy meeting at six that night also, right?
I do not have that on my list. Okay. Sandy, wanna write that down for us?
Well, we do have a board meeting. Don't we have a board meeting on the twenty-seventh or the twenty-fourth, two weeks later?
We have, we have one that's, yes, uh, tentatively scheduled if we need it.
If you need it, oh, okay, so maybe it's not needed, then you, yeah, okay, got it, alright. Thank you.
Yep.
I know there are some uh emails uh that were going around here for the new teacher luncheon. That's still gonna happen on the seventeenth, but it'll be on campus and it'll be catered. Um, I imagine it'll be in the cafeteria somewhere, Mike.
Um, we're still have to do some planning on that. It it could be there, it depends on whether it could be, uh, could be outside.
Okay, that'd be kind of cool. Alright, and then uh the back-to-school breakfast at uh August twenty-fourth at seven-thirty A M. We might have some time there for a short meeting in the morning.
Yeah, and that one will be different, you know, we're intending that there'll probably be just breakfast served to staff in each of the buildings. The welcome back will be virtual, most likely.
Uh, that's pretty much all I had. Does anybody else have anything to add to that uh list of uh activities?
I just had a question on that breakfast, so that's something that we do attend?
Historically, we have, yeah.
Mike, do you see that happening, or I mean, us attending, or?
Well, it's something that we can talk about, I mean, under under normal circumstances and and sometimes Stacy, board members not aren't available for that. But um, uh, generally, uh, it's attended if possible. Um, and that's meant to be a bring everybody together, kind of a celebration, welcome thing in the auditorium. Um, this, from a distancing perspective, we're, one of our strategies in our plan is that we're really not going to have those kinds of assemblies. Under the circumstances, um, faculty meetings in schools should still be done on Zoom unless they really space everybody out, um, which is an option. Um, so, we still wanna serve our staff breakfast, but we'll do do them in the four buildings and have them spread out. They might take breakfast back to their their rooms, so it's a different environment. And then I intend to do probably a Zoom meeting with the full staff uh as a as a kickoff. Um, so, looks looks a little bit different than it has in in the past.
Okay, thank you.
But I do think, to your, to your question, I do think, yes, that in that context, I I expect it to happen. Larry?
Yeah, that's a really good comment and question, by the way. Uh, but let's say if we decide to do something and be on in on campus, uh, I mean, we could split up as a board and. But let's say if we decide to do something and be on, in, on campus, I mean, we could split up as a board and potentially just do a meet and greet or walk, walk through the schools or?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I would, I envision that being when we're interacting, we'll be wearing face coverings, right? And people will be spread out into the four buildings and, and those kinds of things. But yeah, absolutely. That's what I intend to do is and, you know, I'm sure Danielle and John would same thing. We're going to wear our PPE and, and make the rounds and keep our distance.
Yeah. If people are in early and they're picking up their breakfast, I mean, it would be just a welcome back kind of thing from the board too. So with the numbers, we might be able to make it work.
Yeah. I mean, if we're going to be running schools with students back, we, you know, we got to be able to interact and manage that appropriately with a few hundred staff members. So you know, it's another, it's another step in that process. It's another reason why we were together as a group for leadership week today. You know, we're learning to use PPE and to try to keep ourselves spread out at meetings and, and manage those, those kinds of things.
As a look forward here, we're getting together for the annual meeting on the 10th. Should that be the trigger date where we start meeting in person from then on out?
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion. I mean, we're going to even also start on the 27th in person as well. So.
Yeah, that's a good point. From the 27th on, should we just start meeting as a, as in person as a group from then on out? Unless situations change? And we think?
I, I think so, yes.
Gee, Brian, actually, you know, I think I said, I said we were going to be in the board meeting, boardroom, but what I probably should do is look for a different location because then we can spread out more. Well, I know the arrangement in the auxiliary gym wasn't what we were looking for. So whether maybe, maybe it's the stage in the auditorium or something, well, I'll let you know on location because I, we want to be able to spread out more than I think we can in the boardroom. But I would agree with, if you guys are comfortable with meeting together.
Mike, I think the oxygen would have been okay. I think the issue was that we all faced the same way. If we formed a circle and spaced ourselves, I think it would have worked a little better.
I agree.
So you're okay with the Stacy meeting in person?
Sure. Yes.
Jeannie?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Deja?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes, sir.
Noah's got a thumbs up. Kadisha, thumbs up, thumbs down? Thumbs up, okay. From the 27th on, we'll start meeting in person. We'll be, we'll get the band back together. Next item on the agenda is legislative advocacy. Not a heck of a lot to share right now unless John or Mike or Danielle have something.
Excuse me, water went down the wrong pipe here. Um, no, I think it's, there's not a whole lot happening legislatively at this time. So kind of a little bit of a wait and see. You're muted, Brian.
That takes us down to the Board of Education goal setting, brought up a little bit before. We do this every year. We usually have an ad hoc group that kind of puts a plan together and then we discuss it in the full board. Larry's usually, by, by his, historically Larry's usually run that. So unless Larry wants to abdicate that position, Larry, you comfortable doing that again?
Yes.
Okay. Did you want to have some discussion about the items that we were unable to finish because of COVID and what might be the outlook?
I don't know. I, I kind of talked through a little bit of some of it with Mike and some of the things that are there. And, and I want to go through it a little bit more detail, but there's a few of the things that we'll probably change or modify. And, and specifically some of the stuff that we'll need to insert in there would be the items related to the COVID activities, again, short term, longer term for the school year to make sure that there's some acknowledgement of the level of effort and the time that that is taking for us or for the administrative team and probably for us as a board as we go forward with that. So some of those we're going to kind of work through and probably make sure that we have that information identified as a little bit more clear. But I think other than that, I, again, wanted to make sure that we understood that there's a lot of stuff out there in front of us and a lot of other things going on. And we talked earlier, actually, a little bit at the policy meeting about some of the policies related to the equity and diversity and inclusion. And that was one of the white items that we probably will need to put in there as well. And again, will take some time to kind of like just wordsmith that a little bit. But yes, I would be glad to take a first kind of a shot at it and obviously pull in, I think last year, did I have Deja and Steve? So wherever we can socially distance and meet somewhere, we can maybe have a little chat at some point soon. So.
Well, let's just check with Deja and Steve to see if they want to participate or if somebody else has a burning desire to be part of that.
There's always free meals at Deja at the Panera, by the way. So I mean, that's the big draw. So.
I'm glad to participate again this year, but if someone really wants to participate and be a member of it, I will gladly step aside.
Same with me.
Thank you, Deja. Thank you, Steve.
Stacy, Anne, Jeannie?
I'm good.
I'm sorry, Anne?
I'm good.
So we're going to saddle Deja and Steve with having to work with Larry.
Hey, no, Brian.
You probably saw me disappear from the screen a minute ago. I had a power failure and everything went dead.
Oh, no.
Yeah, a little adrenaline there.
I thought maybe you fell out of your chair for some reason.
I, I, something happened else and everything came back on. Of course, the computer kept running because it had a battery, but so. So the little.
Maybe, Brian, just one other thing on that. I know Mike had it linked or as an attached document, but it's the superintendent and Board of Education goals, that document, that's the document that we're going to be working off of. And again, either refreshing, updating some of the existing goals or tweaking and modified things that are on there. And we'll be very, very conscious of the activities that are going on in the district in Mike's time and the administrative team's time related to that. But again, we typically have strategic plan items. Those are not going to necessarily go away. Something on the workforce or our professional development activities along those lines. And, you know, it might be related to teaching in the world of COVID kind of thing. And, you know, as Mike mentioned, the stay safe, stay open. So.
Yeah, we had talked about something related to our equity efforts. Equity and diversity might be a piece too.
Okay, thank you. Anything else that needs to be brought up under board goals and operations I might have missed?
No, I don't. I think again, Mike has done a great job, by the way, I think in keeping the document in front of us and updating it appropriately and highlighting and marking those things where we've got, you know, where great, great things have been done and where there's some open items as a result of different activities. But this document has been very, very helpful for, I think, for me anyway, to be able to see where we're tracking with the activities that are out there, the action planning items. So thank you, Mike.
My pleasure.
Well, that brings us down to a closed session in accordance with state statute nineteen dot eighty-five, print one, print C. Discussion and potential action concerning performance evaluation data, individual contracts and salaries of individual employees and teachers pursuant to that statute. I'll need a motion to go into closed session. I'll need a second.
Second.
And we have to do rule call vote. So Jeannie?
Yes.
Anne?
Yeah.
Stacy? Steve?
Yes.
Deja?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
We are now in closed session.
So I need a, I need a moment to turn off the live stream and we say goodbye to Kadisha and Noah.
Yeah, thanks, Kadisha and Noah for showing, for coming to.